Like to call this meeting to order. Indication by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, District 7, and pledge allegiance by Mr. Al Arthur, District 13.
Oh God, our Father, we come before you tonight as we begin this meeting. We pray for our schoolchildren and teachers while they are on this summer vacation. Protect them and keep them holy. It is our wish, Lord, that the true business of this meeting be under the guidance of your Spirit and the good of all people and not simply the accomplishment of tasks and projects. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock Hall?
Ms. Babin?
Here.
Ms. Hulston?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Patita?
Here.
Dr. Bro?
Here.
Dr. Giac?
Here.
Ms. Boujwa?
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dupren?
Here.
Mr. Schwest?
Here.
Mr. Plaisson?
Here.
Mr. DuBlandis?
Here.
Mr. Gisclair?
Here.
Mr. Archer?
Here.
Mr. Benard?
Here.
Mr. Troy Dupren?
Here.
E, policy on public participation. Ms. Babin?
I mean that we... This is the reading of the policy?
Motion by Ms. Babin to dismiss the reading of the policy on public participation seconded by Mr. Robbie Gisclair. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous vote. Skip reading of policy on public participation. Two, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held June 5, 2019. C, minutes of policy and procedure committee meeting held June 17, 2019. D, minutes of academics committee meeting held June 17, 2019. E, minutes of land and facilities management committee meeting held June 18, 2019. F, minutes of superintendent evaluation committee meeting held June 18, 2019. G, minutes of finance committee meeting held June 19, 2019. H, minutes of transportation committee meeting held June 25, 2019. And I, superintendent's quarterly report for the period of April through June 19. We'll have a motion. Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, seconded by Mr. Barry Plaisson. Are there any comments or discussion? Any public comments or discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Three, approve of academics committee recommendations as per meeting held June 17, 2019. Ms. Tina Babin?
To approve the federal programs to tolerate and super out minor and... 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 education applications and budgets for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved by Ms. Tina Babin. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Mary Patita. Any discussion from the board? Any public discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Four, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held June 18, 2019. Taken away, Mr. Gisclair.
Item eight, to accept the change order to add three additional days to the contract due to inclement weather for the month of April 2019 for the new Bayou Blue Elementary School new administration building project. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Barry Plaisson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B, to accept the credit change order in the amount of $3,548 for the change of a 16-gauge roof system to a 14-gauge heavier gauge system for the re-roofing of building number six at Bayou Blue Elementary School and take appropriate action.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item C, to accept the credit change order in the amount of $12,038 for changing three-and-a-half-inch foil-faced rigid ISO board to a three-and-a-half-inch unfaced fiberglass insulation for the Bayou Blue Elementary School building number six re-roofing project. And so moved.
Not attempting to pronounce that word. Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any discussion?
I put you enough at the committee meeting and then the engineers and the... You can never say an ISO board. I'm like, alright, then.
Any other discussion? Any discussion from the public? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item D, to approve the request to open a new IT project to be funded through IT and construction for the replacement of the current IT backup and disaster recovery solution. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Abanord. Any discussion? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item E, to approve the purchase of the new IT backup and disaster recovery hardware, software, and necessary licensing under state contract from Dale Technologies. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Ms. Mary Patita. Is there any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item F, to accept the new terms and pricing quote number 4544 on leased equipment through AAR Electronics for two-way radios. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Barry Plaisson. Is there any discussion? No discussion on two-way radios.
Well, this item here was just to discuss pricing, the new quantities. Later, a new business will actually do the actual contract itself, so...
Any further comments? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item G, to accept the request from Byron Delone, safety manager, to approve a request from Energy for the calendar year 2019 for the renewal of an agreement with LaFouche Parish School Board for the use of Central LaFouche High School as a reception center for evacuees from St. Charles and St. John the Baptist Parishes in the event of a Waterford 3 emergency. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Ms. Boujwa?
Thank you. I just want to say that this is not to house evacuees. It's just to... a staging, to send them where they need to go.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa, for that clarification on... and being a part of that discussion at the meeting. Any further discussion from the board? Mr. Dupren?
Madam President, the only question I have is if school is going on and there is an emergency, what happens during school?
It's the stadium.
Stadium, Philadelphia, in the parking lot of the area. They wouldn't even be going in any of the buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Dupren. Anybody else? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
To... H, to approve a one-year renewal contract including amendment number 2019-1 with pest control for monthly scheduled pest control services through the district. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Troy Dupren. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the board? Any further discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item I, to approve the request for advertisement for... waste water treatment services at 21 school board sites for a three-year term. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion amongst the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item J, to award the highest score proposal received from Graham County Land Company for pre-event disaster debris removal services. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Al Archer. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item K, to award the listed items according to the lowest responsive bidders for janitorial and inventory supplies. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Joe DuBlandis. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item L, to accept amendment number 2019-1 to the contract fire alarm systems inspections, monitoring, and repairs with AAR Electronics and take appropriate action.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Dennis Giac. Dr. Dennis Giac, is there any discussion?
I just want to say these amendments are just addendums to the current contracts to add the new Bayou Blue upper elementary school. So that's what these addendums are. That's all it is, just adding the new facility coming along.
Thank you, Mr. Gisclair, for that clarification. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item M, to approve the request to advertise for bids for tree trimming services district-wide on an as-needed basis for the fiscal year 2020.
So moved by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Item N, to award the only responsive and responsible bidder, A1 Services Incorporated, for Matt and Dust mop rentals for the 2019-2020 fiscal school year. And so moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Barry Plaisson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Five, approval of finance committee recommendations as per meeting held June 19, 2019. Ms... Dr. Mary Bro?
A, to award the highest score proposal received from Unity Fiber for E-rate eligible managed internal broadband services at a cost of $8,500 per month. And to award the highest score proposal received from Unity Fiber non-E-rate eligible network administrative services at the cost of $1,500 per month. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Mary Patita. Is there any discussion? Any discussion amongst the audience? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
B, to approve the recommended lease replacements through Enterprise Fleet Management for maintenance truck units 30, 32, 10, and 14. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Mr. Robbie Gisclair. Is there any discussion amongst board? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
C, to approve placing the 2014 Ford Expedition surplus vehicle on consignment at Enterprise Fleet Management's marketing office in Kenner, Louisiana, at a current market value of $17,000. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Cheryl Thomas. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
D, to accept the highest bids received through Central Auction House for surplus vehicles. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Tina Babin. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
E, to award the listed items according to the lowest responsive bidders for refurbished toner cartridges. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any discussion among board? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
F, to accept the quote from E-Tel for voice-over IP phone services and equipment for IT department recommendations. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Mr. Barry Plaisson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
G, to recommend to adopt the 2019 comprehensive budget amendments as presented. So moved.
Motion by Dr. Mary Bro, seconded by Ms. Cheryl Thomas. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Six, approval of transportation committee recommendations as per meeting held June 25, 2019. Michelle Thomas?
To approve an additional lift bus in the general area at a cost of $1,000 per month or $1,200 a year. So moved.
$12,000 a year?
$12,000 a year, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, for the clarification. Motion by Ms. Cheryl Thomas, seconded by Mr. Randy Schwest. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
B, to approve the hiring of a bus operator and bus attendant relating to the additional lift bus. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cheryl Thomas, seconded by Mr. Robbie Gisclair. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Seven, new business. Eight, to consider entering into a three-year agreement on leased equipment through AAR for two-way radios and take appropriate action. Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, seconded by Mr. Barry Plaisson. Is there any discussion? Mr. Robbie Gisclair?
Yeah, I just want to... You know, this is something that we've been working on through Land and Facilities for probably about three months from now. And I just wanted to, you know, thank Byron Delone and Mr. Marcus Danos, Mr. Bias, all of the school-level personnel and everyone else in AAR for working with us. And just so you guys know, on this right here, we may have took a little while to edit out the whole process, but it ended up being 13% savings on this contract that was originally presented to us in April to where we're at today. And over a three-year period, we're going to save right around $9,500. So I just want to thank everybody that worked on this and got us all the information we needed and the new checks and balances that will be in place moving forward. So definitely, this was definitely one of the contracts that was worth looking at for an advantage monitorized for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Gisclair. Mr. Bias, would you like to?
I did, and just in addition to that, we did speak with AAR. So they will be freezing the prices for three years. And speaking with Byron and a few of the principals, what we decided to do on the capability side is if there are any changes to this agreement, then we bring it forth to the board as an amendment to the contract and then they will be able to request those changes at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Bias. Is there any discussion? Mr. Plaisson?
I'd like to thank Mr. Bias and Mr. Delone for all the work that they've done on this contract. But I'd also like to thank you for all the other contracts that we just approved. I mean, excellent job, and I'd just like to thank you.
Anybody else? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. B, to consider approving the LaFouche Parish School Board Student Code of Conduct for the 2019-2020 school session. Mr. Frank Coswell?
Madam President, Superintendent Wyron, ladies and gentlemen of the board, according to state law revised statutes 17416.8, each parish school board shall establish a disciplinary policy review committee which shall review all school board discipline policies annually and make recommendations to the school board for appropriate revisions to such policies. The LaFouche Parish School Board Discipline Review Committee, after appropriate advertisement, met here in the boardroom on Thursday, June 27, 2019, at 1:00 p.m. in a public hearing and thoroughly reviewed the LaFouche Parish School Board Student Code of Conduct. A copy of the Student Code of Conduct with recommended provisions of this committee has been previously sent to you as well as being placed on board docs for your study and review. Deletions were placed in red and additions were placed in blue. The recommended revisions were made because of the following. Number one, adjustments to the wording about the past program. The new wording states students that are spelled excluded will be assigned to an appropriate alternative placement. And that appears twice. Number two, recent legislation passed in the 2019 regular session of the legislature which resulted in definitions clarifying the term "serious bodily injury," which is Act 2, and the meaning of "a creditable and imminent threat," which is Pac 209. Number three, minor word paraphrasing in the discipline of special ed and 504 students. And number four, technical grammatical corrections and updates, including correcting the LaFouche Parish School Board website address on the last page and updating the date to read 2019-2020 school session on the cover page. In total, the recommendations for changes to the LaFouche Parish School Board Student Code of Conduct are small. There were 25 pages, and 98% of those pages remain intact. So you can say, you might say that in today's terminology, the committee tweaked the code of conduct a little bit. That being said, the LaFouche Parish School Board Student Code of Conduct for the 2019-2020 school year has been reviewed and updated by the LaFouche Parish School Board Policy Discipline Review Committee in compliance with state law and is now ready for your consideration and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Patita, seconded by Mr. Abanord. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I want to compliment Charles Walker and the Senate Department because it's very, very difficult to get the 2019 legislative mandates incorporated into the Student Code of Conduct and guys that have worked. Having sat on that particular committee, we must ensure Frank came in well-prepared and he assured us that legally we are where we need to be about Charles Walker and the Senate stuff.
Any further discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Frank. C, to consider approving revisions to policy DJD expense reimbursement to adopt the state mileage rate for travel reimbursement. Mr. Troy Dupren?
Yes, our committee met and we believe that the mileage rate and... It was a three-three vote, three As, three Ns. I think we bring it to the board because the mileage rate, when it was explained to us from 2018 to 2019, included Dr. Warren's mileage for '19, which the superintendent in '18 did not collect mileage. So those numbers would be considerably larger with his. So if we would remove his mileage amount from this year, what would the numbers look like compared to '18? Do you have those numbers, Dr. Warren?
The reimbursement for B from '19 is about $1,700.
So how is that put as compared to 2018?
You would take 17 off of that same time period right there, which would be about $2,800 difference of the expenditure from that point that this report is on.
So as...
The difference would be in terms of the increase. You would take the 1,700 off because your difference right now is about 1,200, you know, roughly. roughly, so it would increase it up to about the twenty-eight to twenty-nine hundred if you had that included in it.
So as Mr. Benard had spoken, the mileage rate hasn't been changed in well over a decade, and I believe that our administrators and employees that use the mileage can benefit from it. It doesn't seem like it's, it's a lot, but a nickel a mile or eight cents a mile does make a difference to them, and I think it would be a benefit for them, and I don't think we're looking at a considerable amount of increase that would put the school board in jeopardy money-wise, I think that we are able to swing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Robbie Justclair, second by Mr. Ray Benard. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Benard?
Let's look at those numbers again, alright? And basically, if you look at 2018, uh, those numbers estimated cost, we didn't deduct as well the school board allotment, which comes up to about four thousand seven hundred dollars for that particular year. Now, if we look at 2019, what we're looking at as well is, uh, Mr. Byron's salary that started in January, okay, which was seventeen hundred dollars, plus the school board as of that date, uh, has, uh, been allocated about twenty-two hundred dollars as well. So those numbers have to be put into the equation as well, okay? So it will reduce monies that come from the general fund. We have a three billion dollar general fund, so the amount of monies that come from the general fund, putting that into the equation will definitely increase a little. Okay, if we take a look, I see Miss Petita, I'll come back, I'll let her talk.
No, 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 I have a couple other things to say. Barry, could you hold your comments until everybody finishes?
I didn't say anything.
You were talking to Dennis across the table, but if you could hold them, it would be nice.
Excuse me, I just asked him if we needed a motion before we could have the discussion, that's all I wanted to know.
We did.
I know that y'all hadn't done that, but we were talking.
But Troy talked, just like Ms. Jennifer Tobias talked, and just like Mr. Frank Coswell talked.
Excuse me.
That's not, it's not an issue, so where did we go? You want to comment, Ms. Petita?
Yes, I do. I, I wanna say that I find this very, very difficult without having any figures in the front of me to have all of this discussion, uh, you know, I, I understand it was at the, at the committee meeting, but I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend it, so, um, I, you know, I'm very confused, uh, because I, I wanna see numbers, and I wanna see how this is going to affect, uh, federal programs, and, um, I, I just want to, I would like to have more discussion on this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Petita. Mr. Archer?
Mr. Benard had the option to go before me, I just wanted to make sure I get a chance.
No, go ahead, I'll, I'll go.
Thank you. As stated previously, the policy committee, I believe, from the last meeting we had, I mentioned that I was opposed to the increase simply because I feel the district cannot afford it, and, uh, again, we can agree to disagreements, my opinion, and I'll still feel this way to the end. When the budget improves and the district can afford this, I feel we can. Now, it was nice for the state to give the teachers and the employees an increase, and we got a little break for the district here, but we don't move too fast. That was good for the teachers, good for the employees, but let's take it slow and easy. Feel like tonight with this going on, I feel like it's being rushed through a railroad line, like we better work. Some of you may agree with me, but I wanna be open and honest. It's good for the employees, a nickel, yes, is good, but can the district afford it? What's best for the district? This is what I stand, this is how I feel. So, at this time, I'm not gonna support that item. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Ms., Ms. Babin?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. My question is, if we go and we push ourselves to a state rate, if the state rate changes, does that mean that we now have to go ahead and we are obliged to do so as well? Is there any possible way that rather than putting ourselves out there with this, like, unstable amount, or not sure, if we can maybe phase this in in a small increment, maybe phase it in X amount of cents this year, you know, increase it a little bit more, maybe not all at one time, and definitely maybe put a cap on it as to not say we're just gonna do a state rate? I mean, we might be putting ourselves in a position that we don't wanna be in if we go too far, too fast. Just a, a thought.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. Ms. Boujwa?
Yes. Excuse me. I threw a little scratch tonight. Uh, as stated in the committee meeting, I will have to, uh, go against this motion. Uh, I feel like a couple of things. If we have approximately about twenty-three hundred employees in this parish, and this mileage doesn't affect maybe ten, fifteen percent, I, they do deserve it, yes, but I wanna be cautious. We're just building up our fund balance. I'd like to see us get a little ahead of ourselves before we commit to this. Uh, I'd like to see us do, if we're going to do something, save and be conservative and try to do something like in the healthcare premium, help our employees with that way, because it would affect more of our employees. And also, another thing is the grants. The grants, federal grants, uh, and our employees that work offer grants have already submitted the budgets, the grants, they have been approved. If we do vote on this, they will have to go back and submit amendments, they will have to take out of one item and put into this reimbursement, so they'll have to decide, you know, and schools pay mileage to some of their employees also, so we're putting our schools at a disadvantage also. So for these reasons, I would have to vote against this.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Mr. Benard?
Okay, let me, let's take a look at a couple of things. There's not one surrounding parish that hasn't gone with the state re, mileage reimbursement rate. We have, we have stood on that particular, uh, mileage reimbursement for almost nine years now. In addition to that, we are fighting at this point to keep pace with the salary ranges for our employees with surrounding parishes. At least, we can keep pace with the mileage reimbursement, at least we can do that, and I think that will at least show several things. Number one, it will show employee satisfaction, it will also appreciation, it will also give them a little small perk, and I think we'll have more of our employees volunteering for these mandated aid services and, and things of that nature. Remember, we live in one of the longest parishes in the whole state. It's not unusual for an employee to have to travel a hundred miles round trip. The cost of maintenance and upkeep of private vehicles, this is coming out of our employees' pockets. It's not compensation, it's reimbursement, and doggone, it's time that if, if we, we are so worried about salaries, which we should be, at least let's, let's keep pace with the , uh, mileage reimbursement, so all our surrounding parishes are doing it at this time. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Benard. Mr. Justclair?
I would have to echo Mr. Benard, I totally agree. You know, uh, this is something that a lot of these employees put a lot of mileage on their own personal vehicles, and this is something that they have to take out of their own pockets to be able to compensate for their wear and tear on their personal vehicles. We all know we constantly losing employees to other districts, just lost them. Uh, I think this is like Mr. Benard said, just a little, little out of branch to give just to show they were willing to do something. I honestly agree that this budget is very stable to sustain twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, if you can do the math, we just basically, uh, put in about fifteen thousand extra dollars into the budget that wasn't there before this meeting between, uh, the sale of surplus vehicles and the amount of money we just saved on the AAR contract, so that money wasn't there to begin with, so there it is, right there, that's more than half of the coverage. I just feel like it's time that we also, you know, we help these employees out that are using their own vehicles, so.
Thank you, Mr. Justclair. Mr. Plazos?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I guess a couple of things, I mean, I think our budget can handle twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
I understand both sides. Uh, I think this is a, a good face, good faith measure by our employees, uh, to award them a state, basically, minimum. I'm not sure how we've been able to get away with forty-eight cents a mile, I really don't understand it. It's a state minimum. I'm all for it, and, and at the end of the day, we need to keep our employees happy. We need to be able to get new employees, because I understand that we have lost people. I would like to gain some back. Uh, hopefully, one day get those employees who left back, uh, because these are good people, so I'm definitely for it.
Thank you, Mr. Plazos. Ms. Cheryl Thomas?
I think it's a shame. It took ten years to raise this. That is, that's just ridiculous, especially when you have these employees using their own vehicles. Gas is constantly going up, the cost of everything goes up every year, and we can't continue to want people to do something for nothing. We have to pay our employees their work, we have to take care of them, and if they're using their vehicles for school purposes, we need to help them take care of them, it's simple as that. Because I don't think none of us would use our cars like that, running it up and down the highway, and don't wanna get compensated for it.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Dr. Bro?
I do feel that our staff, teachers do need to get compensated, um, I am, from the committee meeting, I am still a little concerned about the budget. Um, at the committee meeting, uh, the grants, uh, Ms. Jones spoke about the impact, because their budgets have been approved, and so if this goes into effect, then they're gonna have to change their budgets. We also had an administrator in the audience that evening stand up and say that she would have to change the budget of her school, and she was concerned with that. So, I see Mr. Shorters here and Ms. Anka, they both oversee part of the grant, so if maybe you could speak on how this is gonna impact, um, what kind of change would have to be made to your grants, because I know mileage is a big piece of yours with the itinerary staff.
Good evening. So, with federal budgets, I can speak to federal, um, we had to recently absorb the state rates as well as benefits. Yeah, so we have, we have to fund that, um, unlike, excuse me, general fund, so it would significantly impact the federal, state, the federal budget. Um, so we had to absorb state rates with benefits, um, to absorb mileage, we would have to do some adjustments to line items, um, really, in federal, it would be maybe, um, professional development or classroom supplies, things like that that we would have to reduce. Thank you.
Ms. Short?
Good evening. I mirror what Ms. Anka just said. Um, Ms. Jones obviously does the budget and oversees the budget, but she and I were very closely together. We've spoken about this very topic, like Ms. Anka, with us having a federal grant, we've absorbed some of the, the increase in salaries, and thankfully so, I'll, I'll say to that. Um, we appreciate the consideration, obviously, of the board with respect to the mileage increase. It would have an impact on, on the budget for IDPA, and, and we, like Ms. Anka, would certainly have to revisit our professional development curriculum that we have, uh, mapped out. We've, we and our department have mapped out, um, a very extensive professional development curriculum, we're focusing very heavily on that this year, and that is certainly something that we would have to revisit, um, should the mileage increase go up, just because the budget's already been, um, projected based on the current rate of, of reimbursement. I do appreciate very much, however, the discussion and, and the opportunity to be a part of that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Ms. Boujwa?
I just wanna add that, um, I forgot to mention that the budgets, federal and lots of grants have been impacted this year by cuts. So not only do they have cuts, they had to increase the salaries, and now they would be having to move, increase the mileage. Like I said, that doesn't affect a whole lot of people, and I know we, uh, Mr. Just Claire said we saved some money, but we also put into the budget tonight a new lift plus a driver and a monitor. That's a lot of money also, so we kinda counteract what we left, what we saved, we're putting more in for that.
Mr. Benard?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that, um, when we deal with grants, I'm not gonna ask for grants, but line item adjustments are something normal with grants. This is nothing, oh my God, but we gotta do this and we gotta do that. Line item adjustments are, are there with grants, and they occur all the time. What we have to consider as a board is, do we want to at least keep pace with the surrounding parishes and what they give their employees? State mileage reimbursement is important, and that's, that's what we have to do.
Thank you, Benard. Ms. Tina Babin?
Oh, thank you. I guess my question is, since there's so much un, you know, just unsure feelings around, I mean, I understand points of everyone, I do understand about keeping pace and everything, I also am quite afraid that we can open ourselves up and put ourselves in a bad position. Is there any way that we could possibly make a motion to maybe revisit this at a later meeting, when we do have numbers in front of us, where we can have a little bit more, um, research done, that we can look at as far as exactly how it would affect things?
You can try to amend the motion that's on the, you can amend the, make an amendment to the motion that's on the floor to, um, postpone it, or you can abstain from the vote.
So, can I make a motion to amend it, to postpone it, to have more cred?
No, that's an amendment, or, uh, postpone it.
So, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
So, you can make a motion to table the discussion on it, to be taken up at a later date, and it could be determined in your motion, uh, to table, and of course, it would require, uh, yours and a second, and then at that point, uh, there could be discussion, and then there would be a vote on that to table.
I wanna say this, I think you may, you wanna, you may wanna defer it, not table it. It's a little, it's different. If you table it, it's going.
I don't want it to be going. I just think that maybe we need a little bit more information, we need a little bit more discussion, that's not, that's not the case.
Do you wanna make a mo, do you wanna make a motion to amend?
I would like to make a motion to amend it, to maybe defer it to a later date.
It won't be an amendment, it would be a motion to defer.
Okay. So we have a, a motion to defer.
Second.
Is there any, this, second by Ms. Mary Petita, is there any discussion on the deferment? If there's no discussion, we'll take a hand vote, take a hand vote, all in favor of those wanting to defer, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Mr. Joey Guepelas?
I'm named.
Yeah. Mr. Joey Guepelas is a y, Ms. Valerie Boujwa is a y, Ms. Tina Babin is a y, Mr. Dennis Gia is a y, Dr. Mary Bro is a y, Ms. Mary Petita is a y, Mr. Al Archer is a y. All those in favor, all those opposed to the deferment, please raise your hand. Mr. Randy Schwes is a n, Mr. Troy Dufresne is a n, Ms. Cheryl Thomas is a n, Mr. Barry Plazos is a n, Mr. Ray Benard is a n, Mr. Tyler Dufresne is a n, Mr. Robbie Justclair is a n, and Ms. Brooke Huddleston is a n. So that motion fails, seven to eight. We'll go back to the original motion to consider revisions to Policy DJD expense reimbursement to adopt the state mileage rate for travel reimbursement. Is there any further discussion on this topic, Mr. Tyler Dufresne?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I first wanna state that actually, most parishes are not wanting the federal rate of reimbursement, which is fifty-eight cents per mile. We are only asking for the state rate of fifty-four cents. Um, and it should be obvious by now that we are losing teachers at a record pace, and rather than trying to compensate for that with the loss of our kids' education, high-quality education on my end, because we have first-rate teachers leaving us, I think this is the least we can do. Um, let's not forget that the previous board collectively reduced our stipends, um, by four hundred dollars a month. That together goes back into the general fund, which is unallocated, so I'll say, but it, it goes straight to the employees. And one last thing is that this is not going to be for the board members. This particular policy is only for school board, uh, school board employees, not the school board members. Thank you.
Thank you for that, um, clarification and discussion. Mr. Dufresne?
I want, um, also say that we need to do what's best for the district, as one member said, and I believe taking care of our employees is a said, and I believe taking care of our employees is a step in the right direction in this place for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. Any further discussion? Ms. Boujwa?
I just still feel like they would be much more happier if we took care of their health insurance premiums than mileage. I don't think we're losing anybody over a mileage rate, but I think we are losing people over salaries and healthcare premiums. So that's why I vote against.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Mr. Bernard?
I agree with that, but that's a story for a different day. Right now, we're voting on, on mileage and I appreciate what you're saying, but I think we need to bring that up as well at a later time.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Eight yea's, six nays, and one abstention. Abstain, excuse me, abstention. So motion passes, so mileage, the approval of policy DJD has been approved for expense reimbursement to the state mileage rate for travel, for employees. D, to consider entering the executive session to receive a report from the superintendence evaluation committee on the superintendence evaluation for the spring semester of 2018-2019 school year in accordance with policy CEI, evaluation of the superintendent, and RS 4217A1. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Robbie Gisclair, second by Ms. Tina Babin? Go into executive. We've got to vote, excuse me. Um, let's, any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. We'll go into executive steps. Enter to executive session. A, tentative dates for future meetings. A, policy and procedure committee meeting, Monday, June 15, 2019. B, academics committee, Monday, June 15, excuse me, July 15, 2019. C, transportation committee meeting, Tuesday, July 16, 2019. D, land and facilities management committee meeting, Tuesday, July 16, 2019. E, insurers committee meeting, Wednesday, July 17, 2019. E, finance committee meeting, Wednesday, July 17, 2019. G, advisory committee meeting, Monday, August 5, 2019. And regular board meeting, Wednesday, August 7, 2019. Announcements? And adjournments? Any announcements? Dr. Bro?
The LEF Foundation, which is the La Push Education Foundation, will have their Celebration of Excellence, which is our time that we celebrate all of our Teachers of the Year on September the 29th in the Nichols Ballroom, so if you would just please remember that date, tickets will be forthcoming. Savior Day, September 29.
Mr. Bernard?
Yeah, if you get a chance, congratulate Mr. Barry Phelps. He was elected as the state president of our travel management and state lab organization. So that's a great honor for him and it's a great honor for this parish to see him in that position.
Very nice. Ms. Boujwa?
I just want to say that our superintendent had a birthday last week and I want to wish him a happy birthday on the 26th of June.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Uh, Mr. Archer?
And happy birthday to all.
Absolutely. Happy, Mr. Dufresne?
All we have is the Fushon Topon Rodeo this weekend, Friday and Saturday proceeds to go for scholarships and stuff to high school students, so come out and see what's going on.
That's this coming weekend?
This coming Friday and Saturday.
Thank you.
And an air-conditioned tent.
Ms. Tina Babin?
I would just like to go back to us to say that this past week or last week, I was able to attend the teacher leader summit and the presentation of Stafford Fuchai School was wonderful. If by chance you have not gotten a chance to watch the video, which is posted on the webpage, please do so. It was very, very well done and kudos to them for a very good show.
That's very nice. They had three board members there, Ms. Tina Babin, Mr. Tyler Dufresne, and myself representing the board, so it was, it was a fanfare occasion because we had front row seats, so it was nice. Ms. Cheryl Thomas?
This weekend was, this past weekend, we had the event for the Turban Refoundation and he was presenting the key to the city by Matt Exte and it was a very eventful thing. It was a pleasure to have. So I want to thank everybody who donated, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. Thank you for all your efforts in getting things done and making that happen along with Dr. Byron. That's very nice of you. Uh, you know, I'm going to go out to the board. Along with Dr. Byron's birthday, we also had, and please excuse me, somehow missed that, we had three June birthdays. Dr. Mary Bro was June 2nd, Mr. Randy Schwes was June 20th, Mr. Ray Bernard was June 29th, Mr. Tyler Dufresne is July 5th coming up, Mr. Barry Plaisons is July 20th, and Mr. Robbie Gisclair is the 29th, and Ms. Tina Babin is the vera of the camp this time. So I'll let her hand that out. So we'll sing happy birthday for Dr. Byron along with the board members mentioned. Y'all ready? We'll just blanket happy birthday. Yeah.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to everyone. Happy birthday to you.
If there's any further business among board announcements? If not, any further business? Look, Mr. Ghiatt and Dr. Ghiatt are going to say I should ask twice. If not, return.